Appreciate everybody being here. And we will start with item number one, which is a legislative update by Representative Jennifer Fidler. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'm breaking the microphone. Back on there. Thank you, thank you. And I appreciate y'all having me today. I just wanted to give an update and remind y'all that I'm located in the Fairhope Courthouse. We do have a couple of legislative updates coming on. I have a town hall meeting that we're doing here on the 22nd at 9:00 a.m. at the Fairhope Courthouse. There's one on the 27th at 5:30 p.m. Can everybody hear me? So those two are on the books, and then there's one in Magnolia Springs that is also on the 14th at 5:30 at their community hall. But just giving opportunity for the public to come out so that I can hear from the public and let everyone know some of the things, the great things that we've been doing. We've had some tax cuts this year. We have two, the state has two funds, Ways and Means General Fund, and we have an Education Trust Fund. Both those budgets, we had overruns in them this year, mainly because we think, because of the influx of the American Rescue Plan money that came in. So up to about 20% overrun. So in order to, in a way to give some of this money back to the people, we have a couple of tax cuts. One of those tax cuts is going to be in your groceries, any foods that are defined by the SNAP definition. And that's going to be a 1% tax deduction, so we will not have our 4% collected. The state will be collecting 3%. If we have our Education Trust Fund, our revenues go up by 3.5% next year, we will cut another percentage. And that's in legislation. So you'll be seeing that at the grocery stores. Of course, the city will continue to collect there what you're collecting already. That's not going to change. And the county will have what it's collecting. And that's not going to change. It'll just be a reduction from, I think we're charging 8.5 here, so it'll go to 7.5. If we see that revenue next year, it'll go to 6.5, that the public pays for the SNAP definition of food, which is basically all your meat, fruits, vegetables, poultry, any of your main staple items. We did, were able to pay off the debt that the state owed to the Alabama Trust Fund. For many years, we've been paying those, this debt, which are the proceeds from the gas, the revenues from the gas, proceeds that we get off the oil wells, and all the drilling, the oil well, all those machines out there in the Gulf of Mexico, those are revenues that go into the Alabama Trust Fund. So we completely replenish that. And so those revenues go back into our funds, either General or Education Trust Fund, to fund the state. Some things that affect you is the, we went from 15,000 to 30,000 on our bid, so that when we buy, if you buy concrete or any of our staple items here at the city, that minimum bid will go up to 30,000. And then it goes with the Consumer Price Index. So it'll, it'll keep going up as that goes up. The overtime pay, any employee that works overtime, physically works overtime, will not have their income taxed on the overtime only. So their 40 physical hours worked will still have taxed income, but any of your employees that work over 40 hours, that income will not be taxed. And that is yet to be signed by the governor, but it did pass the House and the Senate.
Is that government employees only?
No, it's everyone.
Every employer?
It's everyone and every employee in the state. And that does have a sunset on it for the next three years. So one of the main issues that we've had this year is because of the billions of dollars that have been put into our economy, we feel like we've got some false positives, so to speak. We're having more growth than we should be having in our revenue streams. So because of that, we think that's kind of something false, that we don't need to rely on it, so to speak. So you'll see a lot of sunsets on these tax cuts, just because we don't know what our revenue stream is going to be. All sales tax and all income tax fund the Education Trust Fund, which is our teachers, our school systems, our administrators, except for some legislation Senator Pittman passed a while back on the internet sales. And some of those fund, those income taxes actually go to, go to, in the revenue stream of the Ways and Means General Fund. But because of that influx of money, that is a large influx, it's not regular, it's not normal, you'll see a sunset. That's why we have that sunset set on that, the income tax. So the grocery tax, the Public Works projects will go from $50,000 to $100,000. So that is another change. Representative Givens passed a safe haven law for infants. So if we have young mothers or that have had children within the first 45 days of an infant's life, we have, they're called baby boxes, but they're basically boxes that can be put in an area that's manned 24/7. And if you have a mom that finds herself in, they don't, she doesn't want her child, they can actually put that infant in this box, alarm goes off, and someone can adopt the baby. The legislature also streamlined the adoption process this year. And it was just one of these moves to try to get, you know, some of these children in a safe home and a faster way to do that. So this baby box bill is, will have 10 boxes going out statewide throughout most of our major cities in the state, but also there'll be one in Baldwin County. So that's kind of a cool legislation, actually patterned after a law in Mississippi. There was a loitering bill passed, which we have, it adds loitering in a public right-of-way to a list of loitering offenses, begging for gambling, soliciting or engaging. We have some of these issues in bigger cities, not that I know of here in Fairhope maybe, perhaps we do. But if we just have people hanging out on the right-of-way for no purpose, they can be arrested now for loitering, and the charges are much stiffer. So just so you'll know.
So no hanging out in your office with the basketball pole?
Um, let's see. There are so many, I could, I could actually just stay here all night, half the night. I know, I don't want to take up a lot of time. But there was so many things that, that we got to pass this year with pay cuts, tax cuts. One of the things, another thing that'll, that'll hit you guys is the water infrastructure funding, with ARPA funding. There was a change from the original legislation, and this was mostly because of Senator Elliott really pushed for this, and we got behind it. The change allows a portion of the water and sewer funds to be used for stormwater projects. The local governments will be required to provide a 35% match. And how that affects us in Fairhope is that we were not being able to hit the people that they were trying to target, because we aren't in that lower tax, you know, in that lower bracket of people, in that lower socioeconomic group. But because we opened up the funding to the stormwater projects, and we can allow that 35% match, that allows communities like ours, that are more fluent than other communities in the state, open up that, some of that funding. So I know the mayor knows about that, and I didn't know if you guys knew about that. But that is some ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan monies that are opened up for, for our area. That's the one that's administered through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Another one that you, you're going to be interested in, the Public Works Department and any Public Works projects, iron will have to be manufactured now in the United States of America, instead of being bought from overseas in any Public Works project that we, that we do. We passed legislation protecting retailers from mass theft. We increased penalties for that. We passed legislation regarding the ESG mandates, which prohibits government entities from entering into public contract for goods or services, which contain certain companies or businesses that engage in economic boycott of businesses. And there's a lengthy definition regarding that. ESG is the environmental, social, and government standards that have been, that have been more prevalent lately. We also passed legislation regarding buying land, having foreign entities buy land. It was started out as the Chinese, if you are part of the Chinese Communist Party, you could not buy land in the state of Alabama. And then it, as it went through the Senate, it went on to be changed to a foreign entity, such as China, Russia, and other countries couldn't buy land within 10 miles of infrastructure, of critical infrastructure, like water and sewer plants, electrical substations, and the like. So that's interesting, especially for our realtors. We passed literacy graduation requirements for our children to make sure that they can do common things like write a checkbook. Some of this stuff should already be, and I think we do not have an issue in this county, but some of our areas in the state does, do have problems with financial literacy, where they're not learning how to, to write a check or use a checkbook. So that was passed. And along that lines, we also passed education bills that require us to look at the content of what our books actually have in them, when our children go to read them, to make sure the content is something that is, is approved by some sort of standards, where they have not been. There's not been a group that actually looks at the content. In other words, there may be a book that says lives are good, white lives are good. Well, I mean, do we actually believe all lives are good, or all lives are bad? So that was another bill that was, that was passed. Brownfield redevelopment for industrial recruitment. And this was a bill sponsored by Chip Brown that took, that is designed to look at certain brownfields or areas that, that you may not be able to develop. For example, old gas stations that we need to develop or get rid of, they're ISOs. And I had the perfect example, when I was Public Works Director here, we pulled up the sidewalk at Honeybaked Ham and got into an old gas tank. And that night, I mean, we had two and a half weeks, a week and a half before arts and crafts, and I had a 10-foot hole that had gas all in it. But this legislation actually helped set up a fund that when we hit things like this, when a contractor hits old gas, old gas tanks, or any kind of brownfield, that there's actually legis, there's actually funding that will help pay for that, to redevelop that. That was sponsored by Chris Brown, Chip Brown. We passed legislation protecting first responders from drug exposure, and then set penalties in case someone, like a first responder, actually was hurt or endangered by that, that we could actually go back to the person that pushed that fentanyl or other drug, and actually set penalties for that endangerment. I think I'm hitting, like, I think I've hit most of everything. Is there any questions about any legislation that we passed? I think that's a brief, there's several more, but I think I've hit the, the majority of things that you guys are going to be faced with. Is there any questions that you have?
Mr. Chairman, so do the sales tax cuts, do they have sunsets? I know you said that some of these do, but you didn't specifically state if they did or not.
I do not think that one does. I don't think the grocery tax does. There was talk about how, because in that legislation, we talked about freezing the opportunity for cities and counties, local government, to make up that tax, which was the reason why, in the beginning, when we first heard as a, as a whole, as a caucus, we heard about the grocery tax cut, the chairman said, now, the reason why we may not want to do this is because usually local governments just fill up, you know, that, those cents that we, we may give a tax cut, but then local governments just fill it up. And so he strongly wanted us to understand that, that that's a huge possibility. And as the time moved on, and as we, you know, went over and through this regulation and legislation, there was a strong push to put a limit on what cities and state, local government could actually charge, could they fill that up? You know, we give, the state gives that one cent tax, does the people really know that they're getting charged 8.5 cent tax? Well, so 2% is the city, 4% is the state, the other 3.5% or whatever, or 2.5, whatever it is, 3%, is the 3 cent, is the state, the local government, the county government. Do people actually know where it's coming from? Are they actually going to know that when the, that the state has done this for the people? So there was, in that legislation, a stop so that city and local government could fulfill that.
In defense of the cities, though, don't you think that there's some cities that may have to increase their track? We're not one of them, but if there's some cities that might need to increase their factory revenue, and now they're not going to be able to because of that legislation, when they may legitimately need it. Not everybody's doing as well as Baldwin County.
And that was the argument on the other side, that, that was brought up. But this is just the SNAP definition of food. It's not all foods. And it's not all sales. It's not all, you know, it's just the SNAP definition of foods.
Like I said, I'm not, I'm not thinking so much about us, but...
You're right. I mean, that, that was the other, it's got merit. That point has merit. And it was, it was amendment that was brought to the floor, and it was, it was killed quickly. But it was, it was a push for that in an amendment form. It does have merit, yeah.
I brought, I brought this up to you a few weeks ago. And I'd just like for you to maybe pursue this over the, over the, when you're out of session, and sometime between now and next session, if you can get with some of your colleagues, and see if we can't have a, a central, whether it's Department of Commerce or Department of Labor, whomever would be in charge of that, to have a, a central clearinghouse for city, county, and state contractors to go look for, we talked about this one night here, to look for bids so that, so that we can have competitive bidding, so that we can get more bids on our projects and reduce our costs. Because I know there's people throughout the state that aren't as busy as they are in this part of the state, and we need to tap into those resources. Locals may not like that, but hey, you know, the prices here are just, it's whatever you, whatever they want you to pay is what we pay. And it's hurting local government. We're not getting nearly as much bang for our buck as, as we have.
Yes, sir. I'll, I think that's a great idea.
And it would help the requirements that, we talked about this, your advertising requirements that the state has. I mean, because people don't have written, they don't have newspapers anymore, so it's hard to find places that you can advertise these projects. And you can use that as a qualifier for a place that you must advertise.
Well, the, what was presented was the advertising, the, what was presented was the advertising, newspaper advertising. And in fact, in the legislation of the Public Works, the scope projects that moved from 50,000 to 100,000, the part of the legislation said that the cities and any kind of government entity would no longer have to notify the public in a newspaper, in writing, that they were finishing a project, that they could actually put that on the website, which I didn't necess, I didn't personally agree with that, because I felt like that is a way that the public is notified. And they not, may not necessarily go to your website to understand if you're finished, the city's finished a project, or the county has finished a project. But along to that point, Mr. Brown, we, I'll look into that. And he's, I think that would help, you know, with the newspaper and that advertising, and, you know, maybe another way that we could get the word out. And along those lines, I actually mentioned that idea, and one of my colleagues had told me that he had a buddy, you know, in his city that bid on a project, and he said, he just put a wild number out there. You know, it was a $1 million project, he put 3 million on it. And he got it. And so now he's got a new boat down at the, you know, Orange Beach, you know, so...
Good for him, but bad for the taxpayers.
But for the taxpayers, yeah. So it comes back and, you know, but, you know, he did have extra money in the economy that moved, you know, and that's another way of looking at it. He's spending those dollars on, you know, a new boat, you know, down here at Orange Beach Marina. We got, you know, so that's, so there's, there's a couple ways of looking at it, but you're right. You know, if there, maybe if there were other ways for people to come in and do some kind of competitive bidding, that there would be a lower price on that.
I'd argue 1,000 people will spend that 3 million better than one person will spend that 3 million.
I did forget to tell you that we did extend the opportunity for our retirees to get the, I guess you know about that legislation. We extended the opportunity for the City of Fairhope to have their retired employees to get the lump sum appropriation. So cost of living increases.
If y'all want to do that, why don't y'all pay it? Why don't you have the state do it, instead of putting us on the spot? Anybody can pass a bill that says you're allowed to give somebody a bonus. I mean, what, what does that do?
Well, and, you know, one of the things, one way of looking at this is, we have employees that are faced with a different cost of living than they were 40 years ago, or 30 years ago, or 20 years ago. And some of these employees are getting below the poverty line. And I'm talking about, we've done it on the state, state side.
Well, maybe you should boost your state retirement then. I mean, that's what they signed up for. I'm sorry, but this is the reality, that you're putting these cities on the spot, and you're not committing anything to it. Why don't you guys go back, if you, if, if they didn't make enough in state retirement, why don't you go back and prop up the state retirement?
Well, state retirement's propped up. We're propped. But they, it's the retirees that aren't, you know, getting, they, they retired at a, at a point in life, for example, this city really was built on the backs of employees and, you know, great elected officials. This is my opinion. But, you know, in those years, that cost of living was much lower than what we see And it's changed a lot because of that, what I'd call hard work and dedication, and that I feel like that we had here, the City of Fairhope. And I'm kind of intimately involved with all that, so I do have an opinion, but...
Well, you're going to be one of those persons receiving that pretty soon, correct?
Well, actually, I was a county, I retire from the county, so I did receive it.
But it counts your years with the city, too.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's not, I didn't retire from the city, so I would not be receiving it, so I'm not talking on the behalf of myself. Going back to, is there any other questions about any legislation or something I can work on in the future?
It's helpful, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. There was one by Representative Rafferty I did not talk about, food trucks. It would allow for the expansion of alcohol sales by food trucks within municipal entertainment districts. But we, do we have an entertainment district? Y'all voted it down, so that's not going to affect you.
I don't think it voted down. Technically, it didn't have enough to get voted on.
It actually died if I was not second. It died.
The hands-free driving, this, the cellphone bill, it is waiting to be signed on by the governor. It is a, the cellphone bill that took, it was a lot of debate, went back and forth, died on the floor at one point by the call of the chair to bring it back. There, we, we went back, looked at Georgia's legislation, we amended the text, texting and driving bill on that, and we made it where if you're talking on a cellphone and swerving, or moving from lane to lane and doing an illegal maneuver, you can be pulled over. You cannot be pulled over if you're just talking on the phone. You can be pulled over if you're looking at the phone, looking at video, Skyping, or, you know, videoing, or using an electronic device in that way. So that is being, it's on the governor's desk to be signed. So you cannot be pulled over just talking on the phone. And the reason why there was so much debate on that is because I think we all know sometimes we're maybe in a loud vehicle, we can't hear, we put the cellphone up to, we want a private conversation, there's four other people in the truck, you know, you, you put your cellphone up to your ear. That should not be illegal. So that is not illegal. But if you start doing other illegal activity, moving, swerving, speeding, you can be pulled over.
What if I'm stopped at a red light, and I'm looking at my phone because nothing's moving, and then I forget to go because I've stopped paying attention to the red light?
That'd be something that I would probably...
Not that I've ever done that, but I've seen other people do it, and I want to make sure that I can...
That's it. I would think that would be a second.
I'm behind you, and you're looking in the rear of your mirror, and you're probably going to get the one finger salute.
I have found primarily you get pulled over regardless of when you start swerving. If I can pull it. You tell if I'm pulling or not, I generally get pulled over.
Yeah, is there anything you want, want to tell us? I think that's it, though.
Well, Jennifer, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate all you do, and thank you for coming by and updating us on all that. And I'm sure there will be questions, and I'm sure there'll be things that we want to reach out to you from time to time to ask either for help with, or just more information on. And we're very lucky to have you, and we really appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it, and I'm enjoying it. I, we, like I said, we do have people there at the Fairhope Courthouse. If I'm not there, Cliff McCollum's there. We hired Allison Marlowe, who lives here in Fairhope on Pecan Trace, I'm happy to say. And we have two or three other people that are, Monica English. And so we've got a lot of folks in the legislative office that want to, to help.
You got strong reviews from the fourth grade field trips who went up to Montgomery and were able to be introduced to you, so...
Yeah, that was fun. They're fun. And just send them on. I'd love to see them. It was, it was a lot of fun. But thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all again.
Thank you. All right. Next up on our work session, we have the presentation by Dr. Young on the ferry project of the old substation at Young Street and Nichols Street. All right. Next up on our work session, we have the presentation by Dr. Young on the Farrel project of the old substation at Young Street and Nichols Street.
Thank you for having me. I met with Professor Roderick Fluker from Tuskegee University today. Uh, he came down to take a look at the site. It's the first time he had seen it. We had a couple of members from the Farrel, uh, from the Hope Foundation there, Clarice Hall Black and Vicki Graham. Mayor arranged for city workers to be out there and open the door. And they did a great overview of what's left to be done. They were, uh, very cautious to tell us, um, that, that want to be sure that the place stays safe so the kids aren't swinging on it and like that. So there's still a steel fence around there. They also pointed out that, um, uh, that the site was safe. There had not been any PCB spills or chemical contamination or anything on the site. I thought that was really great. The professor wanted to know it and they had the answer. They were also quick to say that, uh, we need to be sure to have the city involved, particularly Mr. Cortina is involved in the design and build phase of that, just to be sure that it stays safe and meets wind requirements, things like that. So that's all, that's all built into the, to the idea. The way it's going to go from here, um, of course, it has to be approved by you to do anything. There's no cost, there's no, there's no expense at all so far. The, uh, the professor really liked the idea. We got a, he got a tour around town. He was quite impressed with the, with the architecture of our town. One thing he was particularly interested in was the Clay City tile structures in town. They, you know, it was a lot of brainstorming ideas. One thing that he particularly liked was the idea of a brick drive, you know, get everybody turned in, there are extra bricks. The mayor's got a couple. I've got some. Maybe use that as part of the infrastructure there. Use, you know, recycle what we have, keep it inexpensive as best we can. The idea is that the next stage is to, uh, uh, take this back. As he goes back to the fall semester at Tuskegee, he has a fourth year, uh, a fourth year student class called, it's Design and Build. There, it's a five-year program, so these are senior students. They will, they will typically take on a project and give it about two weeks of time to generate drawings, ideas and things like that. Before that happens, he, he wants them to come down here and meet with the public. You know, get people's ideas about what this should be, what it should look like, how, what the functions should be. Some of the ideas around, most important is gathering place. And, and as the mayor said later, we met with her, was able to introduce her to, uh, to Professor Fluker. And I really liked the way he said that, that it's Fairhope's brand. Make this thing look pretty like we can do it. You know, we've got the people to plant the plants, do the landscape and things like that. All we really have to do is build a roof there and keep it safe. And I, I don't think there's any question about that, that that's, that that can happen. And, and I think a lot of the work could probably be done by the city. There are some funds out there. Uh, the Matt family has, has, has talked about granting some cash for it. I'm going to give a little bit to it myself. So I think the whole idea is to try to, uh, to make it a feasible and affordable type improvement for the community. So anyhow, uh, the semester starts in September, uh, right after Labor Day. That will be the next event, will be to bring those, uh, those architecture students down here and then meet with the public. So nothing's going to happen. There's no expense, no nothing till then. There's still a couple of, uh, transformers left that are to be moved off the site, so time's, time's really not an issue. After, after they come here, they're going to generate some ideas and either come back and present it to the community or do it via Zoom, whatever works to present it to you all. Everybody knows that it has to come back, uh, come back to you. We were able to get on Zoom with, uh, Corey Martin so that he could meet, uh, Professor Fluker as well. And then, um, and then I think at the end, he said, well, you can make a little donation to Tuskegee University for our help because, because Corey asked, what's this cost going to be? He said, oh, a couple hundred dollars. So that's just, that's just, so we'll, I would write that check, you know? So we, I think there's a potential for this to be a very positive thing for the community. And, uh, you know, it'll give that, that part of town some of the, uh, some of the value that we have in other parts of town. So anybody have any questions or anything?
I don't at this point. Counsel?
This looks like this is going to be a win-win. I, I, my gut tells me the art part of it, we've got, uh, Amarika Jones Glassby that's volunteered, not Glassby, Amarika Jones and Bruce Larson. There's some great ideas about that. That's going to be cool. Our part's going to be cool.
Good. Well, thank you, Dr. Young. We appreciate it. All right, moving on. Next up, we have committee updates. Councilman?
Yeah, um, the airport authority will meet tomorrow night. But on tonight's agenda, uh, resolution, item number nine is authorizing the mayor to sign and execute some appropriate documents. And that is, because we're a, a sponsor of the Fairhope Airport, this is not committing the City of Fairhope to. If you look in the, the actual resolution, it says that, you know, there's some, 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 the way that they're imagining is 95% of one portion and 76% of another on a $2 million grant. It says that we would, uh, the estimated portion, uh, that we would need to come up with, that being the airport authority would be 700,000. We hope that that number is more than the 400 to 500,000. But we've run some financial analysis that shows that the terminal building itself would have such a value that we can, um, that we can generate enough revenue to, to more than compensate for the note. So I would ask for the council's support in, in supporting that resolution, supporting the airport authority. Uh, it, it will go a step forward, further towards weaning the, the airport off the City of Fairhope's checkbook.
Thank you, Jeff.
Let's see. I think that's all the committee updates I have.
I also have a report. Moving on, department head updates. Come forward and if you've got something on the agenda, let's go ahead and talk about it. Don't be shy.
Real quick, uh, there is a straight annexation on the agenda, item number six tonight. That is celebration church. We typically don't see a straight annexation. It comes in as conditional. This will, uh, go to R1 zoning. There is a little bit unique here. Our zoning ordinance currently defines the frontage of a lot. And it pushes it where historically it's not the frontage in this case. So, um, I do think, I recommend we approve the annexation. There's really nothing else. But, um, I, I would support putting that in the minutes that we will continue to view. And if you don't mind, I'll flip through junk and I, I don't see anybody in IT. So I'm going to go, go forward real quick. Okay, I'll get there. It is here. So the frontage, um, is on dire. And that's the way it's developed historically. I, I said, we, we can cause some problems by just flipping that by an annexation. So, um, just memorializing that in the minutes that the frontage will be continued on there. We will, uh, propose a, an order, an amendment to our zoning ordinance that will allow us in these sort of cases to make that interpretation. I would, I might propose it as the planning director, uh, but just for the administrative purposes of that. But we can, we can debate that through planning commission and city councils as we move forward. But it, it, there's, there would be some problems caused by creating the frontage on Jubilee Trail as our zoning ordinance would be applied. So this is developed kind of as unzoned property in the county following certain set of regulations. Springing it in here changes those. So any questions regarding that?
Is that use allowed in R1, if that comes in in R1?
Churches are not allowed in really any, um, zoning district except for HTD. There's a few that nobody's ever zoned to, so.
So how do you get around that non-conforming portion?
Uh, it's, it comes in, anything defaults in is, is, um, R1. So the straight zoning request, if we allow this annexation, we're accepting that use on that property. So we will then apply any applicable rules and laws to that.
But it'll still have an underlying R1?
Absolutely.
We won't have to go and advertise and change the zoning?
No, no. That, that would be, I mean, they have enough acreage to do a PUD, but that, that seems a little, most of our churches that are.
If we can do that, I mean, I'd probably prefer it to be an underlying R1.
I would too, yeah.
That's the least abrasive of any of them for the most part, so.
And that follows what a lot of our churches here, I believe, Methodist, Baptist, Catholic, are, all are one. So it falls in line with that. But yeah, surprisingly, we do not have, um.
I just want to make sure that we were doing it and it was proper and we, we weren't a non-conforming use that we might need to take action on.
Nope. Good there is just a straight zoning request. But any other questions on that front?
You got anything else, Hunter?
Uh, we've, we've got the street. It's, it's the second reading, so, um, unless you have any questions on that one. We heard that one two weeks ago. We'll go through pretty quick on that one.
Okay.
When it comes to the agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you, Hunter. Any other takers? I got 20 items. I'll need some, some explaining.
I can't speak to 13, so I'm guessing the mayor will speak to 13 for our department. But 17 has a long history, so I thought I'd really help Darryl and come up and, and talk on 17. Uh, we opened bids and we had one bid, uh, for the SCADA at the wastewater treatment plant. If you all remember back in up several months, the issue that we had, and that issue has finally gone away, I think in a good way. Dennis Scott and Tim Manuel, Dennis is our water wastewater treatment plant manager and then Tim's assistant wastewater and Aaron is in purchasing. And I think they did a great job writing bid specs for this. Once we did the opening, then we also vetted ACS. We talked, I personally talked to a firm in Trustful that I have used for many, many years and they talk very highly of ACS and they have worked together. Dennis taught with Moss, Riviera and Daphne, which all uses them with their SCADA with high marks. One of the programmers or whatever they're called lives in Foley, so it's very close. So I, I really believe that they're a, a good group and we won't have any issues.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on item 17?
That's it?
That's it? Thank you.
So we have 16, 18 and 19. 16 is a rollover, rollover item. So this was budgeted back in 2021. And I think the talks were, the truck was originally talked about 2020. So this is a aerial bucket truck material handler. It has come in and the cost went up a little bit on it. So we budgeted 282,627 dollars. And now we're at 294,783.
But we actually have it now.
Yes, we have. It's sitting, it's sitting up in the candy shop right now. So we, this thing's been in about a month. So we haven't received it, but it's sitting there. So the cost is, everything went up from metal to rubber to the resin and fiberglass. And from 21, to me, it wasn't really that big of a jump, what, in my mind. So, but we do have it and that's what we're going to go ahead and try to see if we can't cure it.
And we can, if we approve this, then you, this will, this is, this is the final thing that prevents us from receiving it is us making this change? Okay.
We can go ahead and move forward, get an insurance on it and put it to work.
Well, I do have one question. Had we entered into a contract with them at the former price?
So it was sole source. We did. Clint and Kim went through that and they can, they can adjust it as needed. So we, we did all the due diligence on that and made sure. Just, just to.
That answers the question. Here's the price until it's not the price?
Yes.
It's three years old. It's three years.
Nice contract.
Nobody's going to give you a price for three years.
Should be good on that one.
Yeah, Ben, we're good on that one.
So the next one is 18. That's for our EV charging. That's through, we're working with AMEA and we worked through a DECA and we finally got the grant for that. Uh, Nicole has been helping us out with it a good bit, so it's nice to have her on board. But we do have the signed documentation for it, so here to try to move forward and go ahead and let's order the EV chargers. So this, where this grant works, we have to start off with two, two fast chargers. And then we have to go for the future provide for two more. So we'll have all the necessary, uh, upgrades for that. But we need to go ahead and start getting those because that grant has a shelf life, right? And 99% of this is all going to be done in-house besides the signage. So, uh, I think it's 80/20. And AMEA is putting 50 toward it, so it, it'll probably just pay for it's, the whole thing.
Okay. Good.
That's that one. And then the last one is a budget item on our shop, our old shop. We have four more doors that need to be replaced. They're 20-some years old. We budgeted 60,000 and come in at 4496, so we went with that gap. We've used him several times, so he does good work. Everything's apple to apple, so we just went ahead and went with this gap. He is the cheapest one.
All right.
And it, like I said, it was budgeted, so.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for the pastor?
Where are they putting the electric charging station?
I call it Big Leeway parking lot, but it's right behind, it's pretty much in front of Route 2, it's behind traffic 98. We have, we already have, we, we went out there and did a lot of research on it, so. We had all, we've got everything signed.
Now, I'm assuming all electric cars have universal charging ports?
No. So these chargers have two different styles. And then Tesla has another style. So it's in the works right now. Ford and Chevrolet, I think, are working with Tesla to do one universal for them. Then you have Nissan that has, it takes another one, so. But you can buy a cheaper. So I guess you have, let's be, make sure you got an adapter.
If you pull up to one, every man from south, or you got an adapter, then it'll switch over to one?
Yes, we just have adapter. Yeah. Uh, so it's, I think it's getting a lot, they're, they're trying to work a lot of the bugs out as they, they wanted to be the first ones out there. So now they're figuring out, hey, we need to have one common.
Ben, there won't be a canopy or anything like that?
No, no.
There's just going to be, open, the open, it's going to be a card swipe?
It'll be a card swipe. And it's, like I said, it's going to have, this is initial one and have, they look like the old timey fuel pumps is what they look like. Uh, two, two wires, two, two adapters. And like I said, there's two adapters just for, so there's so many different vehicles. The only one it doesn't adapt to is Tesla. But mostly, most all Tesloners, they have a, a cheaper one or adapter. But it'd be, it won't be like this one out here with a solar panel.
And those will be superchargers. The ones out here are level two chargers. So the ones out on 98 will charge faster than the ones here.
And they're pretty neat. So how they work is these two chargers, they interlink on the DC side. So they, they have the, they have the ability to put out like right at 160 KW. No, 120 something KW, they're 62 KW a piece on the DC side. So they, if a car's not using it, you got one car over here, they pair together and they just, they charge it faster.
If I roll in there empty or no charge, what's it take to give me a full charge? How much time?
It depends on what car you got. Like Tesla, I think on this one of both these, I think it's an I. But both of them have to be kind of linked together. And then just, they're all different.
Good thing it's next to a restaurant, huh?
Just, just don't buy them in trucks and pull a trailer. We're good?
Yeah, Ben, thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else?
Number 12 and number 14 both pertain to recreation, although I didn't personally present these resolutions, but I can speak to my opinion if you'd like.
Pat, you said 12 and?
14.
I got a question about 12, just a, just a little minor change in, and I looked at the actual resolution. Do we need to clarify?
Do we need to clarify, it says one each month, once each month in July and August. Do we say once each month in July and August 2023?
Yeah, I think probably should, just...
Yeah, actually, they have reached out and they don't feel that they can, they can go with the $500 charge per month, so they've asked us to pull this from the agenda.
All right.
Never mind.
Fair enough. $500 was excessive to... To, to what? Did they give you a suggestion? All right.
Pat and I'd be happy to speak to 14, if you'd like for me to. So most of you probably know that lifeguards, there's a shortage of lifeguards pretty much across the country. And we are having a hard time hiring lifeguards. Our lifeguards right now are making 10, 15 an hour, so we're proposing an increase for the lifeguards and for lifeguard twos to try to secure those folks to work at the pool. Pulled some areas around here and most everybody's paying in excess of $15 an hour. We do have some places who've stopped using lifeguards and it's swim at your own risk because they, they just couldn't get enough of them to cover their pools. So in order for us to, to hire them and retain them, we're asking for a pay increase.
If it helps matters, our lifeguards now are required to do a lot more during their duties as far as cleaning around the facility. And I also think that it would help to have somebody in the city get certified to teach these lifeguard certifications, because these kids are paying about $140 out of pocket to get certified to become a lifeguard. So I think it would help if we, you know, got somebody certified within the city to help with that as well.
What's the process for something like that? How burdensome?
It, it's like a two-week course.
To become certified to teach it?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't know that. I'll look into it.
How many lifeguards do we have?
It, it, it varies. It's seasonal.
Are they, are they all part-time?
I was going to say, do you get more than 10 a year? I mean, could, would it be easy just like turning your receipt for, reimburse you up to $140 for the training instead of trying to hire somebody and train them?
No, he's saying train somebody we already have to teach.
And you got to take them away, then you got to pay them overtime to, to do it. I don't know. Simple, turn in a receipt and reimburse you for your training costs.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of asking what the process to get certified to teach was, just to see, you know, how, if it's not a big, if it's not a big ask either way and you can train, you can do all the certifications at one time for these lifeguards.
We had tried at one time, this was in my past life with the city, to hire the person who teaches them, but we really couldn't pay him enough because he's making revenue off everybody he teaches. So that was, that was the issue. I mean, certainly reimbursing them is something that we can do once we hire them, if we want to reimburse them for that cost. I mean, I think that that's an easy thing for us to do. And your question, Councilman Burrell, about how many lifeguards we have, we have seasonal designations and we have yearly designations on lifeguards, but total, because there's so much flip-flop and turnaround on them, we probably have 20 positions in the budget. But we don't fill all those positions at one time, obviously.
Yeah, I don't think you can hire somebody and have them take it two weeks to, to train these people for under $3,000, like take those 20 people and reimburse them. That's not 20 and you don't have 20 every year. You probably have a portion of that.
Right. And they, and they come, typically, they come to us already certified because they, you know, they're just going to try to get a job somewhere, whether it's Waterville, here, you know, wherever it might be, so they come...
They're already certified.
A lot of them come, they come already certified when they come in. We don't send them to take the class once they're hired.
Why wouldn't we pay them then?
Well, maybe if we hire them, then we can get them, we could pay, reimburse them if they show us their receipt, as long as they've guaranteed us to work, you know, through the summer or something. We can look at that, see how other places do it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Anybody else with something, either an update or something on the agenda? No? All right. So let me go through here and see what else we got. Seven, ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 50, 15, 20 and ordinance allocating the funds collected from sales tax. Who is going to discuss that?
This is, this is as a result of the, of the conversation last time about increasing the rainy day fund at $10 million.
Okay.
So this is just establish, establishes those ordinances.
Okay.
It literally just changes the amounts in there, items two and three from seven, then it gets to 10 million.
Okay. All right. Eight. Same thing? Okay. Nine, we have 10, reciprocal, reciprocal agreement between the city and that's... Okay. Christmas party, O'Callaghan.
Do you have to fill in that ordinance number, lease on item number eight?
Not until after you pass it and I put a number on the number seven.
That's all that's changing on that.
Correct.
All right. Number 15, city authorizes and approves hiring of new mechanic to allow current mechanic who's retiring.
Basically creates a two-week overlap in those positions.
Okay. And that's it. Got every, oh, 20. Storm panels for the Nick Center.
Right. That is, that's, so the, the Nick Center got new windows as a part of the insurance money from Hurricane Sally. And when you get 50% more are new windows, according to building codes, you have to put hurricane protection on them. So that's what this is. It was a budgeted item and it came in under budget, I believe.
Okay. $2,500 bucks? All right. If nobody has anything else, we will take a break and come back at 6 o'clock.